I guess we'll start with the, with the pledge.
Okay.
Mark's getting up, so I guess, I guess we will try getting up here.
We will try.
One's allegiance to the flag.
They're invisible. Good lighting.
There's some, there's some lag vocal in there. Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm just want to go over a couple of things really quick tonight. This is for the most part, most of us here. This is our first Zoom playboard meeting. I think one of probably the most important thing is so we try not to talk over one another. And we try to give Amy a fighting chance to sort of take minutes and see what's going on. So, let me see, we got that. Okay. So, let's address the, the minutes from the last meeting. You know, we, what we can do to help too also is whoever's going to make the motion, if you can give your name, then make the motion and the same with whoever's going to second it. Think maybe that would help Amy out a little bit?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
So, this is Ron, and I move, we approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Thank you, Ron.
You're welcome, Amy.
And this is Hal, and I'll second it.
Thank you.
Any comments? All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, under applications, first one is Ridgeview Commons, 22 Residential Lot Subdivision, PUD. It's Zone, Zone 2 Ridgeview Commons Townhouses. We have a request for a 90-day extension of the subdivision approval by Ridgeview Commons Townhouses LLC for Ridgeview Commons 22 Residential Lot Subdivision, PUD. Properties located on Wilton Ganseret Road on 6.03 acres. It is tax map number 114 dot dash 2 dash 15 dot 2. It is zone PUDD. So, we are looking for a motion for that.
Hi, Dave Gabay here. I'll make a motion to approve the request for 90-day extension subdivision Ridgeview Commons Townhomes. Ridgeview Common 22 Residential Lot Subdivision, PUDD, Zone 2, located at Wilton Ganseret Road on 6.03 acres, tax map 114 dash 215 dash 2, Zoned PUD. Seeker is complete on that.
Thank you.
Dave Catalcom, I'll second.
Okay. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Next is Johnson's Auto Crusher of Corinth. It's a request for a 90-day extension of a subdivision approved by James and John Johnson for Johnson's Auto Crusher of Corinth, Inc. For an approved two-lot subdivision, properties located on 81 Ballard Road on 24.4 acres. It's tax map number 128 dot dash 1 dash 8. It is Zone C2. But we're looking for a motion for that extension.
Alright, so Amy, this is Ron. I move to approve the 90-day extension of subdivision approval for James and John Johnson for Johnson's Auto Crusher of Corinth, Inc. For an approved two-lot subdivision, property located on 81 Ballard Road on 24, I'm sorry, on 24 dot 432 acres. Tax map number 128 dash 1 dash 8, Zone CR2. Conditioned upon compliance with the town engineer Ryan Rieper's review letter dated September 11th, 2019, that the county planning board comments are addressed and approved by County DPW. Driveways are eliminated, mobile homes are removed, and county right-of-way is cleared of obstructions. There are no new or different environmental impacts requiring further seeker review.
Thank you, Ron.
I have a question. Question?
Yep.
Are tho- are those new conditions or were those already the conditions of approval? I assume those are already the conditions of the existing approval, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Alright, so that's fine. So those, so the extension, I mean, it's fine. The motion's fine. Just for future reference, if we're extending, we don't need to repeat the conditions, but that's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Dave Catalcom, I second.
Thank you, Dave.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And next, we have North Manor Development Burnham Hollow. It's a request by North Manor Development for a second 90-day extension for Burnham Hollow subdivision. Project has incurred a delay due to reaching an agreement with a third party, which is needed to ensure the easement is completed. Property located on 52 through 58 Burnham Road on 8.7 acres. Tax map 114 dot 15 dash 3 dash 8 dot 1, Zoned R1. Again, looking for a motion for a 90-day extension.
Alright, Dave Gabay here. I'll make a motion for a 90-day extension for North Manor Development Burnham Hollow Subdivision. It's incurred a delay to reaching an agreement with a third party until easement is completed. It's located at 52 slash 58 Burnham Road on 8.7 acres. Tax map is 114 point 15 dash 3 dash 8 point 1, Zoned R1. The seeker is complete.
Thank you, Dave.
Amy, it's Hal. I'll second that.
Thank you, Hal.
Okay. Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Next, under regular applications, we have a Stanley Business Facility, John Stanley. Application for application for preliminary site plan by John Stanley for Stanley Business Facility for a one-story 4,000 square foot garage with an attached 624 square foot office and two 10,000 square foot single storage, single-story self-storage facilities. Properties located on 2 Blue Loopin Lane in Ballard Road on 3.54 acres, tax map 128 dot dash 1 dash 91, Zone C2.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. This is Lynn Sipperly representing John Stanley. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Great, great. Well, we were last before the planning board in December of 2019 and have made a submission on March 3rd, and it was delayed naturally because of the coronavirus and everybody needing to stay at home. But since our last meeting with the planning board, we've made substantial progress on the project. We completed the engineering design, prepared a site utility plan, grading plan, landscape and lighting plan, the stormwater design and report. We also prepared a truck turning radius plan for the self-storage units based on the town of Wilton fire equipment. We prepared a site rendering, which was unfortunately was late in submission to the planning board, and I apologize for that. We responded to review comments from Ryan. And we also prepared two sign renderings of what might be on the business signs. I, I think items of maybe of importance to the board is that the site has a, you know, proposes a oil-water separator system in the back of the building. It's a, it's a concrete slab with a drain in the center. Surface water flowing to the drain. We have a duplex series of oil-water separators to, to filter out any oil that might be in, in that wastewater. We also corrected the plan. We actually think we put on the plan that a proposed phasing plan that would occur here. John Stanley proposes to build this in three phases. The first phase would be the garage and his facility, so he can move his operation to this location. The second phase, which would probably be a year later, would to build, would be to build one self-story, self-storage building. And then a third phase would be to build the second self-storage building. I guess what's happened interim also is John Stanley has purchased the property. He had a contract, but the contract was getting near expiration date, and he purchased the property. So now he's anxious to be able to go on the property and do some site clearing if that's possible. And we are requesting, if, if, if in order, that the board provide us or grant to the project preliminary site plan approval. That's basically what has occurred since our last presentation to the board in person. And we're willing to entertain any questions that you would have.
Are there, uh, let me see. Ryan, are you there?
Yes. So, would you like me to go over the items?
Sure.
Josh, if you could zoom in on the corner intersection area, looking at the landscape. So this is one thing, want the board to pay attention to. If you recall, across from Ballard Road, I forget which homeowner it was, one of these homeowners directly across the road from the, the new building, you know, I don't know if it was this homeowner or this homeowner, but they had concern with seeing, you know, the equipment, parking equipment there. So it was suggested that they enhance the landscape buffering along, you know, Ballard Road to shoot the bulk storage of the materials, you know, they're gonna be off to, can you see my little pen here?
Yeah.
So bulk storage materials over in this area, and then equipment parking, which would, I assume would occur, you know, in this area here. So, what they have proposed is our white pines spaced apart. Just white pines as a buffer. We all know white pines are pretty sparse. So I recommended that they enhance the landscaping with a denser evergreen to shield that buffering from the residents across the road. That's one thing, you know, just the planning board to look at and take into consideration. And also let the applicant know that even though what's shown on the plans, additional landscaping may be requested at time of installation of landscaping.
Ryan, could I interject a little bit?
Yep, go ahead.
At that location that you mentioned where the employee parking is going to be, that's also the location of the present, of a present curb cutter driveway into the property. So it's kind of an open area there. What we're really proposing is two things. We're proposing to put a solid six-foot fence along the, along that total area in front of the parking. And then in, in front of that on the Ballard roadside to put in some evergreen trees to break up the fence, the linear area of the fence. So the fence is really to provide an immediate positive screening of any automobiles parked there, employee parking, or any equipment that might be parked in that area. Just respond to bring that point up that we also have a fence proposed.
Mr. Sipperly, is that fence, this is Brett, that fence looks like 110 feet. Is that what I'm reading correctly?
That's, that's correct. It covers that photo opener. Yeah, it's actually to the west side of the fence in, in, in our storage area. Presently, there's a pretty dense pine forest there. And our proposal is to maintain that pine forest. That's why we actually prepared this photographic plan, you know, a plan showing photographs looking into the site, both during the summer season, and we took also photos in December when all the leaves were off the trees. That area is, is quite dense and the proposal is that we maintain that dense pine forest. And during clearing, if, if, when we clear behind that, if it's open, we would either supplement the open areas with additional, you know, evergreen trees, or we could extend the fence further westerly and provide both the solid screen with the fence. And then, you know, the evergreen trees will still remain between the storage yard and Ballard Road. If, you know, if I'm clear in that description.
Yeah, so Josh, can you pull up the rendering real quick?
Yep.
So, yeah, so what's shown in the rendering would not be clearly as the, as Lynn is stating. If you look in front of the self-storage buildings off to the left, additional pines, you know, the existing natural vegetation and forested area is in that area and would be shielding the self-storage units, but rendering does not depict that. So I just want to make sure that no, as it's shown with this depiction of the rendering, vegetation should be more than what it is here.
Yeah. Ryan, just to add to that, the rendering, unfortunately, I think treats the site as if it was clear cut.
Yes.
And that is not the situation. If you review or take a look at the grading plan, there's substantial area, both on the Ballard roadside and the Blue Loopine area, where we can maintain existing vegetation. It'll be selectively cleared and not just clear cut, is the proposal, which means that between natural vegetation and the addition of, you know, evergreen trees, we will provide screening of the self-storage and also of, you know, of the actual garage site.
Right. Yeah, so that, that's just one thing, just want to make sure that you and the applicant understand is that, you know, there was a residence, has a concern of, you know, the aesthetics, and making sure that, you know, the building is shielded and screened.
That's correct. We recall the resident at the last planning board meeting, yes.
Correct. So, you want to make sure, and that's something that the planning board should evaluate and take into consideration. I mean, we are only giving preliminary or proposed, if the board so chooses to give preliminary approval tonight. So, you know, additional landscaping or, you know, on the final motion, when and if it is granted for approval of the site plan, something could be noted with the vegetation at that time.
Okay. That's it for you, Ryan?
Yes, and, you know, I just, I still have to review the stormwater design, things like that, but I will be in communication with Lynn as I move forward with that.
Any, any comments or questions from the board members?
Mike, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, Mike, yeah, yeah. So I, before, at the public hearing then, if I get Ryan right, he's gonna have a picture from Ballard Road that shows more at the right of the building, looking at the building to the right of it. So we're in screen. Is that what, is that what you want for a public hearing? Is that what you're saying?
Well, they could provide more details on their landscaping plan of enhanced landscaping plan to provide a denser evergreen buffer. Right. But all it's shown is white pines, which, you know, a lot of people, vegetation usually dies off, and they're very sparsely vegetation, so.
I like this picture. I like, I mean, this, the picture of the, you know, the rendering of it. I think what you were talking about, you just need to show more to the right. I think you said to the left, but I think you mean toward, towards the right is where the neighbor's gonna see. This is from the corner, right? This is Ballard Road looking.
Correct. So that's, yeah, I was actually mentioning two different two different locations. So yes, to the, as you're looking at this rendering, to the right side would be the shielding road. And to the left, as you see the self-storage buildings, the lower buildings off to the left.
Yeah.
They're going to try to retain the existing natural vegetation that is there now that we can't see with this rendering. So, you know, in this area here,
Yeah.
there should be some taller, thicker trees shielding it from view.
Right. But I was thinking more for the neighbor's benefit. What we're looking at more to the right, you're talking about the, the group of pines that are gonna shield the parking lot.
Yes, this view here. Yes.
Right. Even more to the right of that. Isn't there?
Yes, even further, further down, yes.
Right, okay, that's what I wanted to see.
You would like to see something in that area?
Well, I think that's what the neighbor was concerned with, right? The neighbor across the street, that's what he's gonna be looking at.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, like, like a picture, I mean, this is nice, the picture's nice, but you know, a picture from what the neighbor across the street is gonna see.
If, if I could mention something, neighbor across the street, their house probably sits back, I'm gonna say 200 to 300 feet from the road. They will, they will see this facility when they drive out their driveway and come to Ballard Road. But I, I, I kind of question whether they will see this site from their house because it sits back so far. If they do see it, it'll, it'll, won't be large and ominous. But we do, I do understand your suggestion or recommendation that we add more screening, and we'll do that on the plan.
Okay.
Then, you know, allowance has gotta be made. I mean, it is zoned, it's zoned industrial, right, or I?
C2. C2, light industrial.
Yeah, the commercial, they're in the commercial, directly across the road is a residential.
So I mean, it's not, I mean, you know, it's gonna look like business is going on, you know, you wanna, can't make a
That's a concern that John Stanley has, is that, you know, he, he don't want to totally hide the facility, if, if at all possible, he'd like to see people go by, you know, observe.
That's it, that's all I got. Thank you.
Yeah, this is Jeff. I had a question. You, you mentioned your Willie Water separator system?
Yes.
Now, that is just gonna be strictly for washing of vehicles, cleaning them out? And then that water, after it goes to the separator, will be discharged to the septic tank or a separate collection tank?
It'll be, it'll be discharged to the site stormwater system, which goes into a pretreatment basin, is the first part of the stormwater, you know, system. And then, you know, from there, it goes into a gallery drain system, which are 36-inch pipes, which really provides storage for a hundred-year storm. So there's no, no water should go off-site from this facility. The storage of the water, the pipes will be perforated pipes, which will allow the water to perfectly into the ground over time.
And then the oil will just be collected in drums, and then you'll have a shipper come in and remove the waste oil?
Yes, there, I don't really know how much oil we're really talking about, but yes, the oil-water separator, actually the, the second oil-water separator will actually close if there, when it gets to a certain point of oil in the system. You know, ahead of the, between the separator and the wash pad. So at that point, you know, the, the wash pad, that's kind of an indicator to the owner that he has to pump out oil from that separator.
Okay. Last question, then. There's, I'm guessing like burns, prevent any kind of oil or liquid from flowing out of the building onto the, onto the ground?
The, the building will have a drain also, which then connects to the outside wash pad, which, you know, then is part of the, the oil-water separators. So any, any oil from the building will also be captured by the oil-water separator system.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Brett, yeah, I have one. I appreciate the, the rendering and the enhanced landscaping and the fence in particular. And I saw on the lighting and landscaping plan, basically wall pack lights on, on each end of the building where there's a garage entrance. Is that correct?
Yes. The, the wall packs really will get, are, they direct light downward. They don't, the ones that we'll select will cast light downward to provide security along the building, but not cast light outward. They won't be select spotlights, there'd be, or, you know, downcast lights, probably lighting an area of about maybe 20 feet around the building, or at least in the front and rear of the building.
Yeah, so not on the side facing Ballard Road, correct?
They're still lighting on Ballard Road side, that's correct.
Excellent. And this town has specs on that type of lighting, Ryan?
Yeah, we basically state that there shall be no light cast off of the property, and they shall be night sky compliant. Everything should be shining down and nothing casting off the property.
We can provide catalog cuts for the lights as part of our submission, showing their area of lighting.
That's it, thanks.
You good, Brett?
I am good, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. We're looking for a motion for preliminary, if anybody's looking to do so?
I'll make a motion, Mike.
I lost it, Bill.
Okay, you hear me now, Mike? You hear me?
I, I can now.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I move to, I move to approve the application for a preliminary site plan by John Stanley for Stanley Business Facility for a one-story 4,000 square foot garage with an attached 624 square foot office and two 10,000 square foot single-story self-storage facilities, property located at 2 Blue Loopine Lane in Ballard Road on 3.54 acres, tax map number 128 dash 1 dash 91, Zone C2.
Okay. I'm sorry, was there a second on that?
Oh, yeah, Brett.
Okay, alright. Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. I gotta get out of this now.
In the lower, lower right-hand corner, there should be a leave meeting in red.
Just put the tablet in the refrigerator.
Thank you, everybody.
Good night. That's what our, that's what our medical professional says.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next, we have Michael Decker, Spectrum at Wilton. It's a pre-app slash conceptual by Michael Decker and CT Mail for Spectrum at Wilton Marketplace for a proposed project, plans to construct a 4,000 Marketplace for a proposed project, plans to construct a 4,050-square-foot commercial building, property located on Lowe's Drive on .92 acres, tax map number 153 dot dash three dash three seven dot one. It is Zone C1.
Ready for me, Mr. Chairman?
We are.
Okay. Thank you all. Um, uh, just to go over quickly, um, we are seeking the concept approval tonight, would like to get back uh as quickly as possible to keep the project moving forward. Um, for many of you were uh have been on the board um since the original subdivision uh was approved, um, you may have noticed that Aldi's is under construction, uh as is the road, um, which is to be uh now known as Marketplace Road. Um, and so, um, Mike Decker, representing Malle Development, that is part of KMDA, which owns the remainder of the property outside of of the Aldi's lot, um, is uh proposing this lot, which is consistent with the variance plan, um, that was the overall uh review and subdivision plan that we had done, uh, I'm gonna say back in 2015, um, uh, and and now here we are with the Aldi's finally being built. The um, uh, this project was, the layout of this lot is very similar, if not, you know, mostly uh consistent with um what was on that plan that you reviewed at that time. Um, we are either meeting zoning or meeting the variances that we had been approved for at that time. Um, there is an access drive uh to uh Lowe's and that is a shared access drive, which is at the right hand or the left-hand side of the screen. Um, you see the bottom part of the Aldi's uh parking lot there, and this will be um a really a simple one-story building. Um, the uh, we'll be doing a rendering to emphasize the uh what the building will look like. And um, it it the uh, it is intended for use by Spectrum. Um, any of you that have had to go down to the only local Spectrum office down by Stewart's in Saratoga know that um, uh, they really are, are searching for a, a space with some more parking and better to serve their customer base.
Are they gonna close the other one, Frank? Are they gonna close the other one?
You know what, Bill? I don't know. I I can ask the the uh, um, the client that tomorrow. It is a lease uh situation, so Spectrum will be leasing this. Um, I have a sense that they may be leaving that site just because uh Stewart's lot gets extremely crowded, um, as you've probably all noticed. Um, so um, uh, so that's, that's why they're moving out here, I believe, uh, as much as I I have been told. Um, they want to move fast, uh, they want to try to, well, before all the COVID stuff, uh, the uh, they were looking to have a building in and ready to be um utilized by November. Um, we want to try to keep them moving as fast as possible. They are talking with contractors now. We have the advantage of the fact that as part of the Aldi's approved plans, um, this front lot was graded uh down almost to the level um where we needed to be for this building. So uh, and Bill Morris has done a great job out there. Um, so we're, we're, we're not pad-ready, but we're, we're pretty, pretty. So the uh, the parking will wrap around. We do have, right now, shown uh stormwater down in the front. We understand Ryan had um comments about that, um, that we'll have to um revisit and consider options uh during the preliminary design. Um, and um, but I think, uh, I think we meet everything that you've seen before, and what I'll do now is to keep it in the interest of time, uh, let you ask the questions.
Okay. Ryan, if you want to go over um your letter?
Okay, I assume everybody saw my letter and took a look at it. Some of the, the highlights were the major impact of this project, I think, would occur. Um, one would be, as everybody can see, um, I can grab my little drawing thing here. Uh, right here is Lowe's Drive. This is Lowe's Drive right through here, and this is the new road coming in adjacent to Lowe's store and the parking lot. Um, so this would be a new curb cut here, and this will be a curb cut that is built with Aldi's. So the thought is, you know, or the concern is, the distance from Lowe's Drive to this new entrance spectrum, and is it really necessary to have this full access entry into the Spectrum parking lot when they will have this entrance right here, which is just a little over 100 feet uh down the road from this entrance? Um, and additionally to the north off of Lowe's Drive, in future, I believe, there will be another curb cut placed for the um north side of the building for access there.
Oh, there is, oh.
So that's something, yeah, right here, in the future. There's another question I have, is this part of this project, or is there a paving limit line Spectrum will build too?
Ryan, we would probably be having the pavement limit line there at this time. I will address that with the owner, uh, as, as I already noted, they are the owner of that property as well. Um, that is where we had tentatively and on the original plan shown a logic, a likely entrance point. Um, the only thing that we want to reserve is since we said at that time, we don't know who all the tenants will be and what kind of specific requirements they would have. So pinpointing that entrance now would handcuff us a little bit with the um, with the future development. So I think what we would probably be doing is where you just drew that line, having a a pavement close off there.
Okay. So, but as far as future access to Spectrum, they will have other means when this is developed, when and if that happens, they will have access on the other side as well. So, you know, the planning board just needs to take that into consideration and uh thinking about, you know, the limit, the number of curb cuts, you know, on this new road, because more curb cuts, more issues with traffic usually get, so it's good access management to limit the number of curb cuts. It's just a good planning policy to have. Um, and I don't think it would hinder their business to have a full access at this point here in, you know, under site. So that's one item. Um, took care of the other. As long as we're talking about access, um, when we talked about Aldi's, we also discussed pedestrian mobility. Uh, I think everybody realizes there's people that you walk along Lowe's Drive, there's two bus stops down by Five Below and Panera, and um, something that's been discussed in in the future of providing, you know, some pedestrian mobility in these projects along the side of the road. So something to think about in what the board would like to see in this area. I know it was discussed at all, the time of Aldi's, um, and it was kind of pushed off at that time for the other future developments to kind of pick it on as a uh means to uh provide access for, you know, pedestrians in this area along Lowe's Drive. So those two items, um, and also in my number six on my letter, the stormwater management area in front of um the building, which is in this area here, on the corner of Lowe's and the new road, uh, which is Marketplace Road. It's preferred not to have stormwater management areas along the frontage of a building if um, you know, they can do elsewhere, it's preferred. Uh, probably a lot of you have seen in front of Panera in Lowe's Drive, uh, that, you know, stormwater management area that is usually silkened in, black debris, uh, the rocks and everything else that are there, occasional flooding. Um, and that's what's trying to prevent here is just, you know, an unsightly area on the corner. Um, preferred to have some nice escaping and just enhance the area. Um, I don't know if, you know, move building closer to the road and, you know, providing stormwater management to the rear or something, or even doing underground stormwater management um would be more beneficial in first of the area. Um, I think some of my other items are, you know, uh, standard comments, and I think uh Frank will be able to address them and provide more information as he moves forward. If you had any of those items, Frank, that the, were a concern on my list.
Right, no, the ones from uh 10 on on your list are, are the, are the basic uh things that we always expect to need to do. Ryan, the only, I guess on number 13, where you're asking for the map from OPRHP and the correspondence for review by agency, we had done that during the, and and maybe it's appropriate time to talk about the seeker for this. We had done an overall seeker um uh for the subdivision plan, the, the, the variance plan, and um uh we, we had identified uh with OPRHP at that time. We just did OPRHP um for inclusion uh in the SWIP for Aldi's. Um, this area has already, as part of that plan, this area has already been disturbed. We can get another letter, it's just that I think we have stuff on file already with the town in terms of the clearance of, of the entire property. Um, so.
Yeah, it would just be a um, an update to that letter, just to have this filed, this application.
Okay, all right. Um, but the others are um, are all the straightforward questions um that we're, that we're used to. We don't see anything that would be um at all difficult to provide there.
Frank, what about reduce, what about eliminating the one access?
I can tell you that the client really wants it, and we had it on that original variance plan, and I respect the fact that you did not go into detail on those plans. So, you know, but it was shown on that original variance plan. They see it as a means of not only getting into this site um uh readily, but also that um, uh, people might want to continue along and access the remainder of the site without going into the, the drive that is for Aldi's. Um, Bill, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna uh argue with anybody about it. It's, they do want it, I'd like to be able to um express their uh, and talk with them further about it, um, express their desires as to why they think it makes um sense for their site. If uh, if they surprise me and say they don't want to go when I tell them that the board is uh, is really not uh in favor of it, and they say, take it out, then it'll be taken out. Um, Ryan and I had, when I got his letter, we had talked about the idea of, you know, the in-between would be to have it uh as a, an entrance only rather than uh the full access. Um, they are, they are developers, this is what they think to do, Bill, they, they.
I'd like to know what Spectrum thinks. I mean, if you're gonna go to Spectrum, you know, you're going there, you're at a mission, you know, you're.
Yeah, yeah, you want to get in and, you know.
Whether there's one or two entrances, you're going there to do something and nothing's gonna, I would imagine, stop you whether there's, if there's only one entrance. I mean, you know, you want to see less entrances, less curb cuts.
Yeah, I, 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 I can't argue that, but I can't also argue with my client's knowledge of their business and their lease and the, so you have the Spectrum people who would like it. You know, they, they want it, you know, they want it ease of access and, and uh simplicity for their um tenants or their customers. The, the real estate uh development firm wants it. Um, we'd like to at least take the shot at showing what type of uh traffic implications it is. Um, we'll consider the alternatives. We have other things to consider there, as Ryan had mentioned, um, about the stormwater. You know, moving that, the, you know, what we have to do there may influence what we can do with the driveway if we had to wrap around there.
Right.
Um, we're, we're, we're going to move quickly. Um, we would like to at least have the opportunity to present um uh plans uh that, that show the merits of it and will be cognizant and realistic of the fact that if the board is uh, you know, uh duly opposed to it, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna want to get the building in.
Hey Frank?
Yep.
Um, I just have a question. Considering the other entrance, which you're gonna have a pavement line and is the same property owner, correct?
In, in, on which side up at the?
We're going further up Lowe's Drive. I mean, yeah, there we go. So eventually, and and I know you probably can't speak to this at this point in time, you'll have a pavement line, which Ryan kind of drew out. Um, and and maybe you can't answer this at this point in time, but if, if whatever does come in this area, are we, and it's probably just an assumption, that it would have access through the backside of Spectrum?
Uh, through, up in that area? Yes, it would have access. The, Hal, I think one of the things that we have to recognize is, is just how long it took us to get the Aldi's here. Um, the, they're with the, you know, retail development, the way that it has been, I can't tell you when that driveway is going to be done. Um, it's gonna be based on tenants, you know, coming forward, um, and or them finding. So um, so we're open to the discussion on that in terms of uh how and when it should be done, um, and how that works with the other act. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna use not having that entrance as the reason to have the entrance down below there. Um, uh, but we will, we'll look at it, and if the board is inclined um to move towards that entrance now, I'll, I'll talk with the, with the applicant about it.
Hey, Ryan?
Yes.
Um, if we can go back down to the entrance off Lowe's, uh, off Lowe's Drive into that first entrance that we're talking about possibly eliminating the.
Marketplace, isn't it?
The distance, yeah, up, the distance uh from that intersection uh from Lowe's Drive onto Marketplace into that entrance going in, um, what are we about 100, 120, 150 feet, somewhere in there?
Yeah, it's just over 100 feet, I believe. I looked at it earlier.
Ryan, I'm showing from the, from the stop bar at, at Lowe's Drive.
Oh, you're looking at this dimension?
Yeah, from there to there, to the, to the center line of the entrance, it looks like it's about 130 feet.
My, my concern on this would be as time goes on and uh Marketplace Road gets developed eventually, um, the plan was all the way to Gick Road. As, as the traffic increases, obviously, um, we want to get people, we want to get people off Lowe's Drive, and if they're indeed are going to turn into the Marketplace Road, I would prefer not to have any kind of vehicles potentially slowing down the traffic, turning from Lowe's Drive down to Marketplace. Um, that being said, looking at, you do have a, a, a full-blown entrance down just a little bit farther on Marketplace. Um, I'm, I'm kind of looking at, I would much prefer that first entrance into the site is, is not there. And I know you mentioned even maybe, maybe a right-in um or right-out only, but even that, at some point, um, Marketplace Road is only single, you know, single lane in each direction, so you're, you're gonna have the potential of people coming in, slowing down to make that right-hand turn, and I just, and again, I'm not, I'm not so sure on a 4,000-square-foot building, um, there's real, a real need to have, uh, you know, that entrance and another one down on um uh Market, Marketplace Road, and then uh even potentially another one off Lowe's Drive that, I know you really don't know yet what's gonna happen, but, you know, the potential's there. That's, that's. That's, that's how I feel about it, just for some input.
Right, no, I appreciate that, Mike. You know, I remember when we talked about the Walgreens and that was a big concern of people turning off of Route Fifty and they didn't want the access off of Old Gick Road for that very reason of somebody slows down to make a turn in. And next thing you know, the person behind him. The only thing I would say is I don't, I don't see Marketplace Road and, and maybe this is, you know, I'm not looking far enough into the future, but I don't see this intersection ever being like the Route Fifty intersection in terms of the volume of traffic. So, but I, I, I hear the concerns and I would like at least the opportunity so when we come back with preliminary that we'll, we'll give either evidence that, that sways you at that point or we'll have taken it out by then. And that's, that's what we would just like the opportunity to do. It gives me a chance to consult with the, with the applicant and let them know what the board's feeling is.
That's certainly fair.
Yep, I agree.
Yeah, so something else to just recall is that across from Lowe's Drive going over to Saratoga Hospital, eventually there will be a connector in that area as well. It was part of the master plan. So it just, you know, another thing to consider.
Yeah, Ryan, I want to, I want to apologize because I'm looking at my plan sheet here and it's got all of Lowe's Drive on there and I'm looking on here and it, something must have happened with the plot file when, when you got not all of Lowe's Drive on there. So I don't know whether it happened in the transmission or what, but it would benefit to be able to see all of Lowe's Drive there.
Yeah, from the PDF, I think somehow.
So my apologies on that. We'll make sure it's right on the next one.
Hey Frank?
Yep, Bill.
What's, what's the status of building right now? I mean, is, when do you expect to have Aldi finished and?
Well, we are, we are continuing all of the site work. And the reason that that was able to be done is because
Right now.
The, the fact is, oh, I love seeing Ryan with his, his head in the, in the middle of that.
It's on location.
Because it is a road construction, that was given clearance under essential. And Ryan and I discussed the fact that you really could not do all that earthwork for just the road. So the site work was allowed to continue and Bill Morris is moving ahead with all of that. And there's been no contestation on, on whether or not that was allowed to be continued. The, the building is, at least the last I heard, the building department wasn't issuing the final building permit because the grocery store building itself did not meet the essential construction level. So they have it planned for deliveries of some of the steel or the, you know, for the foundation work, April twenty-first. And, but they may be sitting there for a bit, but the site work is going to continue. Aldi's really wants that store to get up and going after all this time. So we may end up getting very far progressed on the, on the site work while the building is held up a little bit. But that is also why the opportunity to try to keep this one rolling because a builder will be able to get this, get this going rather relatively quickly because all the pre-work has been done on the lot.
Right, you know anything about when they're gonna resume construction or you don't know? You don't, you haven't heard anything about the state?
Oh, the state? No.
Yeah.
Yeah, the governor won't take my calls.
Right.
Or the president.
How's that possible?
Rightly so.
He obviously doesn't know the power that Ryan has to just have a site come up behind him and look at what I've done, you know, it's.
Look at all this equipment I have working.
I know, at his disposal.
Stores aren't essential construction though, huh? You think you could slip that one in there?
I would think so too.
Well, yeah, it's a gray area. We're allowing Bill to continue with the town road and infrastructure because those are considered essential. So it's the Economic Development Council's call on what is essential or not.
And it's a food store, so it's part of the supply chain.
Yeah, that would be my understanding. It's an essential. It's any grocery store. That's why, what is it, Target can continue to operate its stores while some of the others, which don't have any food or produce cannot.
Yeah, but the, the governor gave the already having jurisdiction, the ability to make that decision.
Okay.
But I'd be happy if Ryan wanted to express to the building department that the planning board all feels that way.
Honestly, I would honestly appeal that. I really would. I, I think that you could get a green light on that.
I think Aldi's, I believe Frank, Aldi's is taking that route and seeking.
They, they are looking into it. They have stores, as I told you, Ryan. They have a store still under construction down in Babylon, Long Island, you know, where it's much more hotter zone than ours. And I think a couple other down, others down in the, those areas. So I know that they, they know the situation and they are trying to, but it is, it is controlled by the local building department.
It's controlled by us? So you're not working because of?
In terms of the way, Bill, in terms of the way that I understand it, and Ryan, correct me, I may play some wrong. So the Empire State Development was given that authority to write the, the guidelines. Alright, so we all know that grocery stores are an essential business, the actual operating grocery stores. But when it got down to construction, they were not, grocery stores were not listed under construction. So what they also then said was for enforcement, they look for the local and municipal departments to help enforce this because they can't be everywhere. I do not, it is such a gray area, as Ryan already said. I'm not saying the building department should do this. I would like them to, but I don't have enough. I'm, I'm not Mark Shakner. I can't figure out the legal stuff of this.
Well, it's, it's a moving, it's very much a moving target also. The governor, the governor's orders have been issued and modified. And as recently as either yesterday or Monday, for example, the Stewart, there's a new Stewart's being built in Glenn's Falls. It was not allowed to continue because it was new construction as opposed to the reason that Dave mentioned, or I think it was Dave or whoever mentioned about Target being allowed to stay open because it's already, because it's already in existence. Then, then there was an Empire State Development clarification yesterday, I think, and now the Stewart's new construction is allowed to resume. But Ryan's right. I mean, this comes from the governor through the Empire, through ESD. That's where it comes from.
Yeah, but I, I can speak to this, guys. I've gotten a bunch of, of these done in my job and, you know, they're very much, they're all over the place. Ask, ask and you'll get it, I'm telling you.
Exactly. You just have to ask, you know, Mark's playing a role of, you know, the authority having jurisdiction on making the call and, you know, I've talked to him about it. It's kind of a gray area, but I think if someone asks and ESD just says, yeah, they shall.
I can tell you, we asked for our car washes. They said no.
Yeah, I could, I could see that though. I mean, like I said.
Next year, car washing, next year, car washing, you can see that.
It's not logical. I'm, I'm not telling you it's logical and I'm not telling you. But I, again, I just, you know, everything that's been in the supply chain in my, my day job, I've been able to get through, you know, just a little work.
I think it's as logical as a grocery store is gonna be built a year from now.
But I'm a little biased though, Dave, okay?
I hear you. I'm with you, Ron.
I'm gonna appeal the car wash thing myself.
Yeah, what about my ninety-day car wash thing? Has that extended there?
Extended. It's extended. Extended. They've all been extended. Yeah, we, we moved them all out and won't start charging them again until we resume normal operations. See, Ron, that's the mistake. It should only be extended for those towns that allow construction to continue.
I like that, Hal. If you include interior, you know, because people have to keep their interior sanitized, you may be able to run that angle. Who knows?
Well, you know what, we would, I honestly, I understand the interior part not being approved. I, I do get that. I, I don't necessarily understand the exterior portion of it, but, you know, it is what it is and we'll deal with it, but we didn't even ask about interior cleaning.
Yeah, I think the interior is more important to be sanitized, but anyway.
Okay, we digress, Mike.
Yeah.
Okay, so Ryan, getting back to a comment you made about discussion for some sidewalks?
Yeah, it's been something that has been discussed with Aldi's and the master plan of this area, taking into consideration, you know, pedestrian mobility for this area. It's something that should be looked at. Consider good planning to take that into consideration.
Yeah, Mike, I, I intended to discuss that with the client tomorrow, going over all of these comments. We weren't able to talk today before this meeting. And we'll, we'll, we'll come up with some, some form of a proposal there of what we can do. Ryan, I, I would ask this much. If, if we were to add sidewalk along the frontage, can that sidewalk be within the right of way? Like, could we put the sidewalk edge right on the property line but in the right of way?
Yes.
Alright. I figure that would be a concern of theirs, knowing whether or not people were walking on their property or walking on the, in the town right of way.
Yeah, it's always a legal debate, who's liable, who's responsible. You know, if someone got walking, it's a public access way. I mean, but the property itself is a commercial, public access anyway, so.
The reason, another reason I wanted to know is because you, you referenced doing some enhanced landscaping out front there. So if I, if we can, we'll try to do that with the, with the sidewalk placement, leaving ourselves a little room, a little extra room on site to come up with something to, to meet that comment.
Yeah, I think this would be a good opportunity to enhance the corner with the road. And kind of enhance the aesthetics along, you know, Lowe's Drive. You know, try to match what's done down the road at the car wash with their extravagant landscaping.
Yeah, amen.
The, the other thing, since we're talking about the landscaping out front there and and everyone tries to meet Hoffman standards, you know. But the, the sign that is there, you asked a question about that. That sign was, again, given all the variances at the time that we got the variances, and that is actually scheduled to be installed as part of the Aldi's project. They'll have to get their sign permit from Mike, but that is part of their action. And that sign was intended to be one that had a few tenants on it. We had got all the, the sign variant, like at least the variances set for that with that original application. And so that is, that is intended to be done. If, if this project didn't happen, there'd still be that multiple, multiple sign out front there.
Yeah, so that's.
What's that, Bill?
Is that the rectangle that you could see on the?
Yes.
Yes, so, you know, the consideration with that is just, you know, with the planning board would look at. There's obviously a separate permit for a sign, but the planning board usually looks at the, you know, the aesthetics of the sign, landscaping around it. So that would be something just to present to the board as well. I think it was given, I don't think anything was given with the Aldi's proposal, but I would assume that the landscaping package would be part of this application.
Yes, yes, they, they were, they were responsible for the sign and then any landscaping down around it would be part of this project.
Yeah.
Frank, what kind of sign, is it a monument sign?
Yes, when we, Ron, I can't, I apologize. I don't have the, the actual detail on it. So when we, when we got it approved, we had three different types of signs that we talked about. And I, and this was one of the medium-sized signs. There was one here and one up the road on Lowe's for the future development. So they wanted it because this was gonna be at the corner of Marketplace Road and Lowe's Drive. They wanted to at least have Aldi's out front there since they weren't fronting on Lowe's Drive. They wanted to have some space on that joint signage. And I think, I think it was designed to have Aldi's and three, three other tenants on, on there. Much the same way, I think, one of the things we presented at that time, that it would be much the same way that we have out by Route Fifty for the Wilton Marketplace signs.
Well, that's all you have right now in that, in that development is Spectrum and Aldi's, right?
Correct.
And you, this, this part, this one parcel includes a couple places across, across Lowe's Drive too, doesn't it?
Yes, yeah, so all the way along the back of the, of the hospital properties.
Yeah.
We, we will sooner than later probably be coming in for a, a, a request for the actual site plan request for the actual driveway that Ryan was mentioning that really will be across from this to connect to the Saratoga Ambulatory Lot. Again, that was part of all of the original planning. Most of us know that there's pretty much a dirt driveway that exists there right now. It was in the, the requirements of both the ambulatory lot and our subdivision plan that that connection be fostered and made. So that's something that sooner or later, so that it really starts. Anyone who is asking about development across the street wants to know if that connection is gonna be made. So Malle is probably, Malle Development is probably going to take it upon themselves to just go ahead and put in the request for that.
So I don't know if anybody has noticed, but we lost our chairman.
Oh.
Yeah, I saw a little switching there. Is Mike really gone?
Yeah, so he said he has bad service, so I think our vice chair will.
Oh boy, Howie's in charge. Oh boy.
Alright, alright. Yeah.
Alright, Hal, take us home, pal.
Looking for.
Oh, I mean, at this point, I think, Ryan, are, are you all set? I mean, as far as?
Yeah, so at this level, you know, Frank and the applicant are looking for conceptual approval. This meeting was a pre-application and concept review of this project. So Frank and the applicant are looking for a conceptual approval on what we have seen today, tonight with comments that we've been discussing, you know, access, mobility.
So, so Hal?
Yes.
So if you, if you go in that direction, board, I mean, obviously Frank Palumbo's here, he's hearing what we're saying. But if you go in the direction of a motion, I think some of the concerns expressed are significant enough to just be included in the motion as concerns. So that if Frank Palumbo, you know, isn't telling, is it for some reason is discharged, I'm making this up obviously, and is no longer the consultant for the applicant, the applicant doesn't think, oh, everything we've put on paper so far has been blessed by the planning board. The access in particular seems like a significant concern.
Especially if the connection to the hospital, is that road lined up right with Marketplace? Is it like a four-way intersection?
Yes, it would be.
Yeah, I'm not crazy about having another entrance there, especially Marketplace is gonna go all the way back towards Gick. I listen to the argument, but I'm concerned with it.
Well, and that, that may be, Bill. Well, and, and that, that may be, Bill, the, um, uh, I mean, that is a separate application at this point, that isn't before you now. Um, it was before you at one point and was at least conceptually approved at that time. So, um, not proposing that now. Ryan knows, um, and he has asked us for some, some additional, uh, traffic data, um, because we've, at the time when we, when we originally talked about this, we knew that as development occurred, that we would reach a threshold, a threshold of traffic that would call for a more complete, um, uh, traffic analysis, including any impacts down on the intersection, uh, with Route 50 and any possible signal impacts down there. I don't think we're at that threshold yet, but Ryan is asking for that information. Uh, go ahead, Mark, it looks like you might wanna ask something.
Yeah, but it's up to Hal.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, no, well, Frank, only, only if you're done, Frank, if you're not done, keep going.
Uh, I, I was basically done. We, we, we know that we, we have to address Ryan's question on the traffic and, Bill, you'll have more information to judge that on.
Right, so all I'm saying, Board, is if you head in the direction of a motion for conceptual, I think it would be appropriate to add something like, "The board has made the applicant aware of concerns regarding traffic circulation and access." Just something generic like that, so it's part of a motion, if you make a motion.
I agree.
Okay. I guess, uh, with that being said, Ryan, if, if you're all set with everything that's on your, um.
Yeah, I, I think Frank is, uh, understanding of the concerns here and I think he has, you know, I've had several conversations with Frank about this and, uh, I think hearing from the board, he's hearing, you know, he has some good feedback to, back to the applicant and say, "The board is concerned with this, this, you know, these items, so we need to either revisit the site, um, as far as layout and, um, and take it from there." But yeah, I agree with Mark Schachner stating that we should have something in the motion express.
Now, um, Mark, should something be mentioned in, in the motion as far as, uh, anything to do with the potential for sidewalks? I know that we've discussed it, some people have brought it up, board members, and Frank has acknowledged that they're gonna discuss it with the applicant. Should that be in the motion as well?
Yeah, I think that's very appropriate, Hal, you know, again, somewhere along the line in the motion, it could say something as simple as, "The board has made the applicant aware of concerns regarding traffic circulation and access and sidewalk issues."
Uh, Board, this is Brett. Board, I'm, I'm concerned about what, what does preliminary approval mean? What are we preliminarily approving if it's not the design that's being presented before us and, and that?
You're not, you're not. Sorry, go ahead, Ryan.
Uh, just conceptual, just wanted.
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry, I used the wrong word, but what, but the, the concept that's being put before us is, 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 is not something that we find, uh, 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 approvable, so why are we talking about granting conceptual approval? I don't see a concept in front of me that I, that, that looked like what it's going to, uh, ultimately be if the applicant is, you know, were, were to come back and, and revise the plan in accordance with our, uh, with our feedback. So I, I guess I'm, I'm confused about why conceptual is, is being entertained at this point or what exactly that means.
Well, I, I don't know if Mark wants to address that, but I, but I think in the past, Brett, we've always, I, I think a conceptual plan is, is something just that, it's a concept. And then I think typically when the applicant comes in, as long as there's no major issues, now, these are some pretty large issues that we're asking, um, but I think prior to giving preliminary and/or slash final, I think we've always given the applicant the chance to go back and make the adjustments, uh, make the changes and talk with their applicant about some of the stuff that we're looking for before we move ahead through preliminary and final. I don't know, Mark, is, uh, that's typically the way I've always viewed it.
I, I mean, I think that's an accurate statement, Brett, I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest that I think your comment is extremely appropriate, but Mike is not on the, on the, um, at, at the meeting anymore and if I, if, and if anybody disagrees with what I'm about to say, please do so, but in my experience here in Wilton, Mike has been very, very much, uh, in favor of promoting the conceptual approval, I hate to use the word, but concept, even if the plan is gonna be under, going to be undergoing some reasonably, some, some, even substantial changes. My own opinion is, I think Brett's comment is extremely appropriate and, you know, it, this is not, it sounds like, um, a concept plan that if it was come, if it came back to you for preliminary, that the board would likely approve. So you will not hear me, Brett, or, or any other members, you will not hear me pushing in any way for conceptual approval at this stage for the reasons Brett's, Brett has articulated. I think it's a very appropriate comment. There is some Wilton history, and I think Hal is sort of in, uh, referring to this, there is some Wilton history of trying to keep all applicant, applications moving forward and conceptual approval is the first board step in keeping the applications moving forward. I, I think I said something similar to what you said, Hal, but with different words.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, I appreciate that, Hal and, and, and Mark, so that, that makes me more comfortable, uh, given that, you know, this is our, this is our kind of standard practice and it doesn't prohibit us from, um, you know, from kind of standing our ground if they come back with exactly the same thing and, oh, we have conceptual, therefore, um, let's just move ahead with that for preliminary. Um, I, I would hope that we would react, uh, differently to, to that at the preliminary stage and would have, and would not be handcuffed, uh, because, you know, we've, we've had a number of, of comments, uh, no offense, Frank, we have a number of comments along the way in the discussion here about, well, when we, when we had the, the, uh, uh, the, the variances created and, and, and that was addressed in the overall plan, well, the overall plan isn't site plan and I've been castigated a number of times by, by my fellow board members, kindly, when I've brought up, uh, uh, concerns that are further down the, the, the path of our consideration than should be considered at the time, but then I don't want that to, to, to have momentum behind us so that we can't raise issues and make changes because, well, that was already talked about and, and you didn't raise it then, so, so we, therefore we can't raise it now, kind of a thing. So if, if, if it's about history and we'll have the opportunity to address all of our concerns at preliminary, I have no problem with conceptual.
Well, and I, and Brett, I, I appreciate, I appreciate all you said. What I will also add is that, um, there is an acceptance of risk on our part. If we come in with a plan with preliminary, because there's a lot that we have to do to address, you know, just take the stormwater comments, you know, that could, that could force us into some changes that would, um, uh, that, that could, you know, change this plan and we have to come back with that. But I understand on the access, if my client says, no, push forward, push forward, I'm going to be telling them that there's a risk of you not getting your approval with that, we're gonna be back at the board. So, you know, the, the fact that it's concept approval, and I agree with all that Mark said and what Hal said in terms of the history and how it's been done, but if I come back in with a plan with that there, I, and I don't get past preliminary, I'm not going to be surprised. I'm going to make my best effort to say why it should be there and, but you're gonna be making that decision at preliminary. So I, I don't think that granting conceptual and allowing us to move forward is, is relinquishing anything in terms of, uh, it's, it's on the record basically, that, you know, that it's there. I don't think we'd be bullying anybody into that access. We're either gonna have good merits or not. Go ahead, Mark.
So, I appreciate everything Frank just said, but getting back to, again, I think Brett's comment was very appropriate. While Frank, your comment is reflective of Wilton history as well, the, the language in our, in our law about conceptual could be interpreted or could lead one to believe that, that, that as long as the applicant comes back with something that looks a lot like what was approved at concept stage, it will get preliminary. So I'm gonna suggest, what, what, is Mike back, Ryan?
You're muted, uh, Ryan. Ryan, you gotta unmute yourself.
You're sorry, there, he, he is, uh, Mike is listening in via telephone, so. Okay, so I'm gonna suggest, if the board wants to go concept approval, I'm gonna suggest slightly beefing up the language that I first suggested, um, and I'm just running this by the board, I just wrote it on a piece of paper, uh, "The board has made the applicant aware of significant concerns, including traffic circulation, access and sidewalk issues, and is looking for modifications for the preliminary submission."
So, hey, Mark, this is Ron, can we also add the stormwater management area?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And can and should.
I'm comfortable with that.
Did you get all that, Amy?
To put that in the motion.
I can do it slower if you want, Amy. You're muted.
Yep, I didn't hear Amy.
No, I'm unmuted now, I was muted.
Want me to say it slowly?
Um, I got it, Mark, I'll, I'll figure it out.
Well, let me say, let, let me say it so it's on your tape. Um, I'm suggesting that if the board makes a motion for conceptual approval, it include language to the effect of, "The board has made the applicant aware of significant concerns, including traffic circulation, access and stormwater, sorry, stormwater management and sidewalk issues, and is looking for modifications in the preliminary submission."
Thank you. Perfect.
Okay, I, I guess with that being said, are there any other questions from board members? Is that a no, I take it?
No.
No.
Okay, then I guess if anybody's comfortable enough at this point, based on Mark's recommendations to make a motion for, uh, conceptual, we can move in that direction.
All right, I'll try, I'll try.
I'm sure you got it all written down.
Yeah, I got, so I move to approve the application for conceptual site plan by Michael Decker for Spectrum at Wilton Marketplace, posed project plans to construct a 4,050 square foot commercial building, property located on Lowe's Drive at .92 acres, tax map, 153-3-37.1, Zone C1. All right, I'm gonna put your language in, Mark, as best I can. Uh, "The board would like to make the applicant aware there was, there are significant concerns with the conceptual site plan included, uh, to include, uh, curb cut, traffic access, stormwater management and, and the potential for, uh, sidewalks." Is that close enough?
And, and is looking for modifications for the preliminary submission.
Perfect. Amy, you get that last little bit?
I did, Ron, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mark. I'll second the motion.
We have a second?
I'll second, David Gebbe.
Thank you, Dave.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so moved. All right, well, since Mike is not with us, I would just like to take, before we adjourn and take a motion, I'd like to say, thank Josh for setting this up. I thought it went very smoothly.
Great job, Josh, yeah.
Thank you, Josh.
Thank Mike and Ryan.
Scary, looks like a dark room.
Yeah, I know, I know, since we had our test run last Wednesday, I thought this went extremely smooth.
Yeah.
Okay, well, is there a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn. Phil.
Second?
No.
Second?
Jeff's second.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Well, then I, I guess we wait and see what happens for, uh, next month. All right, thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Take care. Stay healthy, everybody.
Good job, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
God bless America, man.
God bless.